Ladies and gentlemen, if could everyone please take their seats.
We've been eight years. Well, you've only been on six. Three years.
All right. Take your seats, please. They're about ready to call roll. All right, let's go. It's twelve oh eight, and I'd like to call the meeting of the county board, special county.
About two oh eight.
I will take two oh eight in a heartbeat, two oh eight, and call this meeting of the special county board, October twenty second order. It is two oh eight, and clerk, could you call the roll?
Alan. Arroyo.
He, he's working on his link.
Bates. Berman. Doherty.
Berman is here posthumously.
Garcia.
Garcia here.
Grape.
Grape here.
Gums.
Gums here. Here.
S.
Kai is present.
Leonard. Linder.
Linder here.
Molina. Penises.
Penises here.
Roth.
Here.
Sanchez.
Sanchez present.
Strathman.
Strathman here.
Sergeus.
Serge is present.
Tarver. Tepe.
Tepe here.
Williams. Young. Hira.
Here.
You have a quorum in the room.
Very nice. Thank you all for coming today. Ms. Molina, are you online? No, I do not see her, nor do I. Mr. Leonard and Mr. Bates are unavailable. May I have your permission to bring Mr. Sergeus in with full voting rights?
No.
Yes.
No objection. Okay, Mr. Sergeus.
Sanchez too. Thank you.
Roll up your sleeves.
And also Mr. Sanchez.
Sanchez, same permission with Mr. Sanchez. Very good. Yes, Mr. Sanchez, yes. Okay. All right, um. What's the last one in the room? Oh, no, it was Roth. It was Roth, babe. Last one in.
You can blame me.
Go, come on.
Dan. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And I say so. To the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, indivisible, ever to be just. I'm being, go ahead, Chris. We're gonna have public comment.
We have no minutes to approve. We do have public comment, so I'd like to begin with that, please. Okay. I remind everybody, our public, that you have three minutes to speak. Your microphone will be turned off at three. We're not cutting you off. It's just we have to be sense, sensitive to our time. And please try to stick to the topics at hand, which we would be grateful. So our first speaker today is Mr. Esposito.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members. I've spoken a number of times. I think I've indicated over the years, I have an accounting degree. I did, I was an internal auditor for a number of years for Sears, and I ran my own business for almost twenty years. So I think I have a little knowledge of working with numbers. But on page one ninety-four of the agenda for the last meeting, I assume it's in this meeting also. It goes through the history of the twenty twenty-four actual amount that was spent, then the twenty twenty-five adopted budget, and the amended budget for twenty-five, ultimately to get to the submitted budget for twenty twenty-six, and the first review budget for twenty twenty-six. Well, I looked at those numbers, and I'm gonna try to talk fast, because I know I'm gonna run out at the three-minute mark. When I reviewed this, it looked as though the percent over the adopted budget was eight percent. Uh, when you amended the budget, which was up to two hundred ninety-nine, rounded to three hundred million dollars. That is a forty-two point seven percent increase, dollar-wise, just in total, okay, over the twenty twenty-four. Now, how in the world do you increase your budget forty-two point seven percent? And I would be happy to talk to somebody to see where I'm wrong with this. So I said, well, let's play around with numbers. Between year and one year another, there's gonna be an increase of some type, inflation, say three or four percent. But what I did is I said, okay, let's take nine percent, okay? That would be a number over twenty twenty-four of two hundred and twenty-eight, nine thou, uh, million dollars. Seventy million dollars less than was approved for the amended budget. Why? Why did it have to be that high? Okay? Isn't nine percent increase over one year over another enough? Well, obviously not. Then I looked at the twenty twenty-six budget. If you do the same thing, the, it looks as though very nice. There's a decrease between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. But I said, okay, let's take a situation of another ten percent increase from year to year. That means nine percent between twenty-four and twenty-five, and then ten percent between twenty-five and twenty-six. I project that the budget should be for twenty twenty-six, two hundred and fifty-two million dollars. Or in other words, twenty-seven million dollars, almost twenty-eight million dollars less than what you're projecting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Right here. Our next speaker will be Steve Lefler.
Hey, everybody. Steve Lefler again. Just a reminder to everybody that the cut that was proposed and seems to have been passed was seven point nine nine across the board. I think I have that correct. And I've already talked a little bit about it for, but for the, those people who weren't in the room a little bit ago, the gas tax math, twelve thousand miles is your average driving distance every year. Twenty-five miles per gallon is about what the average vehicle is getting right now. It's four hundred and eighty gallons total, times three cents, which is what we're talking about, three cent increase here. So we're talking about fourteen dollars and forty cents annually, or about a buck a month, is what we're talking about to increase the, the fuel, motor fuel tax. This is gonna go to the, you know, this is transportation money. It's gonna allow for money to be moved out of transportation, uh, the RTA fund and into the general fund to fund judiciary, state's attorney, public defender, other outstanding causes that I'm sure you all agree we want to continue to have working. Regarding the grocery tax, I just did a little chat GPT while I was sitting here. These are, I asked, what are the grocery stores are in unincorporated areas in Kane County? And, you know, there's, there's little convenience stores that are here and there. They're gonna do it. The, but the main ones that it came up with were the Mill Creek Market in Village Center, Mill Creek Village Center, Longo's Plato Market, and the Foxview Grocery and Liquor on Route twenty-five. I would imagine also the truck stop out near Huntley is gonna be a major producer of revenue on this one, which, you know, if you think about it, most of those folks there, the truck stop, they're not Kane County residents. So they're the ones who are gonna be paying a lot of tax, bringing a lot of tax money in. So with that, I'm gonna have to go to a doctor's appointment. I hope every one of you guys have a super fantastic day. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Simon Schreik. You see here? Shraggy, I'm sorry, Mr. Shraggy, my apologies. Okay, and thank you. Thank you for the correction. All right, he's not here. We'll continue on. Our next speaker then is Brian Anderson.
A good afternoon, Brian Anderson, Sugar Grove. I'm not one for props or hats, but one of my friends gave me a, this hat. Taxpayers' lives do matter, and that's why we're here today. We do have a voice. Uh, I've been coming here consistently for two and a half years, but I need to take everybody back to your first executive board meeting, April second. It was after April first consolidated election, where seventy-one thousand voters came out, and fifty-five thousand voters said, we are done being taxed. Seventeen thousand people said, we're not being taxed enough. So the overwhelmingly majority of people, whether it is a gas tax that is already at five percent, add three percent. On top of Illinois, we're one of the highest in the nation. As I spoke in the last group, there are many towns and cities that already have in Aurora, they have a gas tax, now the new Kane County bump, now the Illinois bump in taxes, a gas tax. Those are the people that are most affected. But I'm most disappointed is that I have not seen the real work being done. We've got, what did I write down? We have nineteen days until we all meet here again on November tenth to present the budget to we, the people. I don't know how much more we can get done really in nineteen days. So the rest of my comments are what happens when the new budget comes into place. We've already had to take out almost thirty million in reserves. The current reserves are shrinking. Let me start by saying this. You know, I looked at PACE. We spend twenty million dollars on buses that are empty, right? Right now, we're making about one point three million. In twenty nineteen, we were making three point nine million. So the PACE program needs to be looked at, and who should look at that? Our five hundred thousand dollar a year lobbyists. They need to take a look at how we can renegotiate and get more money back into Kane County. Let me take the group back to TMP, if you're a note taker, two-five-one-two-two Transportation Meeting this week. We do not want to spend a million dollars right now for a project that isn't gonna be happening for another twenty-four months. That road, Randall and Hobbs, we don't need it fixed today. It's like my teenager going, Dad, I'd like my room read done. It's, it's not a need, it's a want. It's based on future population growth, and our future population growth by twenty fifty is not gonna be at eight hundred and forty thousand. We're five thirteen, and we're shrinking. Illinois is the third largest migration state in the nation. So you, as board members, we actually starting to do the work. Thank you very much.
Jean Mayer.
Resident and Christian. We were talking earlier today, this Kane Board, about upholding human dignity and keeping families together. And yet, right now, this board is trying to tax gasoline and groceries, essentials. So many families are struggling to keep their heads above water financially right now. Some of those who rely on gasoline to do their work, for example, landscapers or drivers. Most people require gasoline to get to work, essential. Now you wanna tax food a double whammy by increasing prices of essentials. What is a person to do? Does it pay to work, or is welfare a better option? Begging at a street corner, or maybe spending the stretched budget for drugs or alcohol to dull the pain when they can't pay their bills? Dignity. What does this struggle to survive do to human dignity? Financial struggles are the biggest reason for divorce, broken families. We need to keep families together. We need to lighten the tax burden. Our Kane County budget nearly doubled in a few years. We need to reduce staff and services back to prior levels. With property taxes in Illinois, the highest in the nation, the American dream of owning a home and raising a family in prosperity, instead of hand mouth and, but, um, and, and doing that with hard work, it, it made legal immigration here something people wanted to do. So I would just say, no, we don't add taxes to essential things to make the struggle harder. Thank you.
Our next figure is Michelle Bettig.
Michelle Bettig, St. Charles. We are looking at a sixty percent increase in county motor fuel tax at this time. Right now, we have an eighteen point four federal state tax, or federal tax for gas. We have a forty-eight point three a cents tax for Illinois, and right now a five cent tax for Kane County. We're increasing it, or we're supposed to increase it sixty percent to the eight cents. This is just the beginning. Every July first, the CPI, uh, the, the Consumer Price Index will automatically, pretty much automatically increase that as well. People are struggling, as mentioned. We have a hundred and two counties in, in Illinois. There are ninety-six counties that do not have a county state or a county fuel tax. So Kane County would be one of the few to have that. If we do increase this, we would be the third highest in Illinois. We are already twenty-eighth highest county for property taxes and being taxed to death out of three thousand one hundred and forty-four. We've come here for three and a half years watching salaries go up for the elected officials. Eight point three million in voting machines were spent, voted yes to a hundred and ten million dollar government building by many people, voted yes by a forty million dollar health building by many people on the board, fifty thousand for a climate action plan, almost a hundred, or one million for plans for a government center. All the while, we're sitting there waving hands, stop, stop, there's a problem with your spending, yet no one seemed to care, no one seemed to matter. Everyone's looking at the bottom line now as a shell game, and moving this to this and this and this. And if we put it back here, it's still taxing the people. I don't care if it's fourteen dollars or fourteen hundred dollars. People are being taxed higher in this part of the country, in this state, in this county than any other parts. The people that you sympathize, month after month, we, we, we feel so bad for these people, for you. These are the people it affects the most. If you have multimillionaires, they ride their bikes, that's fine, that's great. But not everybody has that luxury of disposable income. I spoke last committee meeting, and, you know, Vern and Chris Kias, they have their electric cars. It doesn't affect them. So, okay, I brought my electric car today. So I am, I, I'm, I'm not gonna be paying gas for that car. However, in the end, we all are not sharing the burden. The county board needs to help the people of Kane County. A lot of you are up for reelection. This is not fair. This is not right. When you see the budget that's increased so much in the last three, four years since Corrine Prague has taken chairmanship, it's sickening, it's disgusting, and there's no sense of spending.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Dinwiddie.
Thank you, and it is pronounced Dinwitty. It's bad enough.
Dinwitty, I'm sorry. I, I looked like an elf.
That's all right. It's really disingenuous to minimize tax increases, because it isn't just one tax that is taking more money every year. Our phone bills go up, the taxes on the phone bills go up, the gas for heating, cooling, and electricity goes up, water, sewer, garbage, groceries go up, and Pritzker just got rid of the one percent grocery tax. And to my knowledge, just about every other community has put the one percent tax back in on the groceries. Uh, insurance, medical and liability goes up, and some of that insurance is mandatory. We have no choice. We have, we don't have a vote on it. We have to do it. We have TIF districts. As I, as I said earlier, there was five hundred and fifty-four plus billion dollars that we could have had in Kane County to fund our budget for TIF districts. And TIF districts are corporate welfare. I would urge all of you to get smart and understand what TIF districts are. It's corporate welfare. Governor Pritzker just said that he doesn't want to pay for the Bear Stadium. He doesn't want the taxpayers to pay for the Bear Stadium. They might give incentives, but you know, every time you're giving an incentive to a developer, to Crown, Shadine, you name it, whoever it is, every time you give an incentive to them, you're taking money away from the taxpayers, and I want it stopped.
Mr. Dinwiddie.
Not gonna cover what everybody's already covered. I wanna piggyback on what Brian said, more money into Kane County, and Yvonne said.
Mr. Dinwiddie, a little closer to the mic.
Little closer. I'm gonna be eating it.
There you go.
That's all right. I'll speak up. Anyway, Yvonne was talking about the TIFs, and I've talked about the TIFs before, and I was kinda waiting for you to get the budget done. I thought you would have had the budget done a month ago or so, but I, I can't wait anymore. So, um, I've been trying to fly below the radar, but today maybe I won't. Once every five years, I wear my forty-five-year federal employee pen, and I was a member of the Chicago Federal Executive Board for twenty-five years. And when I retired from my agency, I had eighteen states, which was more, more area than any other regional director in my organization. So as far as where you're losing money, back to what Brian said, we have gone from the increment from a hundred and like thirty-five million dollars taken out of our tax revenue ten years ago. And Yvonne mentioned the number in twenty twenty-four, five hundred and fifty-four million was taken out of our revenue in taxes for the county to give to TIF districts. And that's gone from a 12.8% to now we're at 31.5% of all the tax money we take in corporate and real estate is now going to TIF districts. So the only thing I'm going to say at this point, it's, it's, it's relative to budget. But when you get your budget, I think you should form a group to look at the TIF money, the 554 million that went out last year. That could have been funding Kane County, that could be funding the schools. One time I talked, I did some numbers, the schools in Kane County had lost $1.03 billion in three years. That's for the schools and the kids in just three years to pay off what Yvonne calls corporate welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Foose.
Susan Foose Batavia. I've resided in Illinois for the last 56 years.
Susan, I'm going to ask you too, if you can get the mic.
I've recited, resided in Illinois for 56 years, moving from the near north in Chicago to Evanston to Batavia to get away from crime, congestion and high taxes. I'm now on a fixed income and I see no relief in sight from the creeping tax and spend, or should I say spend and tax governments of the city, this county and the state. My t-shirt, my t-shirt says it all with one addition, instead of a question mark, it has an exclamation point. I'm now contemplating moving from Batavia, leaving Illinois for a suburb of Indianapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ginger Romano.
Good afternoon. The 1% grocery tax and unincorporated Kane, of that 40,000 to $400,000 estimate, how many retailers would be involved? What SKWs, you know, the SKUs would actually be taxed? Because a lot of these outlying unincorporated areas really are more fast food and they get charged a regular tax. There's very rare groceries. It's really meat. Your, I think your outer grocery store items, like milk and stuff, pop and chips aren't included. That kind of thing, fast food. And truck stops sell mainly fast food. And it would affect truckers, as I stated in the last meeting. They're, they're struggling. They pay a lot of high taxes. Do you even know what businesses are affected by this, you know, that are going to be contributing to this tax? Has anyone actually read the statute 55 ILCS 5 slash 5 dash 1006.9 regarding the grocery tax? Do you know it goes to the County Grocery Tax Trust Fund held by the State Treasurer? Then it goes to, the treasurer transfers it to the STAR Bonds Revenue Fund. It kind of looks more like the state's making all the money on this. I'm not sure my question got answered about the distinction between grocery retails occupation tax and grocery service occupation tax. And then you even heard from your own Democrat lobbyist in judicial that the Illinois legislature is trying to figure out how they can take more money from us by creating a delivery tax and there's other taxes that they want to do and, you know, on top of the the fuel tax that they decided to just tack on every year, increase it every year. So anyway, it it just seems like government's getting kind of big and I think they're, they're getting away from where, what it started out to be. And I think we need to go back to the basics. Thanks a lot.
Our last speaker of the day is Denise Seabolt.
Always messing with this mic. Good afternoon. First, I want to set the record straight that Kane County is actually experiencing a population growth with an increase of 3,756 residents between 2023 and 24. This marks a shift actually from previous decline. Most of the reasons why, strategic planning, investment in our communities and businesses, ongoing residential developments, strategic efforts to attract workers and younger families, affordable homes and amenities. I know I live in a great county and people can move and they can go places and what they'll find out is that people live here because it is so safe, one of the safest counties in America, basically. We pay our public, you can laugh, sure. 4% of the budget of your total tax base goes to this county government. Most of it is mandated for public safety. That includes our police and our judicial. Both are being attacked. You want to defund the police? You want to get rid of judicial workers protecting our children, protecting our safety? I don't. I'm here because of the amenities. I don't have children, but I can tell you, I, we, we spend 70% of our taxes on schools. You can go to school boards if you don't like how they're spending. But the way this board is working to take care of our community should be commended and working hard to get this budget. There's already been insane cuts. People are asking to make sacrifices. But you can't own a home, a business or run a county without revenue. The gasoline tax and the retail tax is minimal. Yes, it's on top of other taxes. But you can't go on talking about how the taxes implemented from this county is affecting a whole tax base. And taxes have not been raised except for the last CPI increase. These increases are minimal. I'm not going to go buy a house when I don't have a job or savings account to pay for my needs. So we have to work together. We have to look at some revenue needs. We really have to find solutions instead of coming here and bashing the board for not working on this because I've been to these meetings and I'm seeing it. So thank you for working hard on this budget. I appreciate all of your work. And I hope we can come together to find more solutions.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment. I, I appreciate everyone's opportunity to speak and taking time out of your day to attend this meeting. Some of you have been here quite frequently and I'm happy that we have your participation. Alrighty. I only have one thing to amend that was referenced, just for clarity. And I will confirm this with our Chair of Legislative. The cost of our lobbyist was referenced at 500,000. That contract is actually $120,000 a year, not 500,000. Is that correct, Ms. Gums?
That is accurate.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
I'm sure they wouldn't mind a raise.
I would say no to that.
I would too.
Alrighty. So we've got some work to do. So let's get to it. You ready? May I have a motion in a second to discuss item number 25 dash 381, which is authorizing an increase in the county motor fuel tax. Motion, please.
Gums will move.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kaya's second.
Thank you, Mr. Kaya's. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Eickboll.
Yes, I'd like to know what is the maximum that the board could increase this tax and how much are we increasing?
All right, Ms. Hopkinson, can you come up to explain that, please? That was a question that I had as well.
The maximum that the counties who have this local motor fuel tax can increase it is eight cents. It's currently five cents, so it would be increasing from five to eight cents.
Creasing three cents more. That's the limit.
This particular motor fuel tax is tied to the Consumer Price Index. So under state of Illinois law, every July 1st, this tax will increase at the Consumer Price Index, index at that time. So it will go above eight cents.
So it's not 3%, it's eight cents?
It's the, the tax is currently five cents per gallon pumped. The resolution will increase it to eight cents per gallon, which is an increase of three cents per gallon.
And that's about the limit right now?
That is the limit. A county board can only increase it to eight cents. But this tax is tied to the Consumer Price Index, so it will still go up every year after that.
No, my question is right now.
The Consumer Price Index goes up.
Yeah, standing right now, it's three cents and that's the limit right now.
Yes.
That is correct. That is correct. That is the maximum amount we can raise it.
Yeah.
That is, that is the threshold. Yes, yes, sir.
David Young. So when you look at the resolution on here, I just kind of wanted to highlight a couple of things. The CPI, like Kathy had said, it automatically increases our, the county motor fuel tax, it automatically increases every year. In 2022, it increased and it gave the county an increase of about $270,000. In 2023, that increased to 40 to 4.7 cents a gallon. That was a bump of $730,000. 2024, when it went up to 4.9 cents a gallon, that was a revenue of 300,000. So over the past, I don't know, two years, there's been an increase of 1.2 million into Kane County just from this motor fuel tax, but that's, that's apparently not enough. Some of the, one of the people said that the state motor fuel tax is 48.3 cents. The federal excise tax is 18.4 cents. So every state gets an 18.4 cents per gallon tax. When you look at Kane County, if we, if we prove this, we, like Michelle had said, we're going to be number three. DuPage is at 9.7 cents per gallon. McHenry is 8.5 cents per gallon. I'm talking about the county tax and then we'll be at eight cents per gallon. So right now, our, the average gallon in Kane County is $3.89. Just giving you an idea, down in Southern Illinois, Effingham County, their average gas price is 271. So almost a dollar less. If you go, if you look at something a little closer to where I live, I could drive to Lake Geneva, Wisconsin and pay 263 per gallon. I get 20 miles per gallon on my truck, even if I, it's 90 miles both ways or 90 miles, if you count 45 miles both ways. Even if I take that into consideration, I could drive to Lake Geneva, get 20 gallons of gas and save $13 if I had two hours of time to do that. So the reason why I bring this up is that the gas is already high enough. We're already taxed more than we should. And we're already increasing the gas due to the CPI from the Department, Illinois Department of Revenue every year to a tune of nearly $1.3 million over the past couple of of years. But that's not enough. Not enough, is it? Obviously, I'm going to be voting no against this and I hope everyone else votes no against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Malina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for not being able to be there in person. And I missed the executive committee meeting, so I'm trying to backtrack from what I remember from finance. My understanding is that with the increase in, in this tax, we'd be looking at, was that 6.5 million more for 2026?
That's correct. That is an estimate. That's a correct estimate.
Is that estimate based on six months' worth when we have the ability to increase it? Because the current motor fuel tax goes in effect until June 30th. So is that 6.5% six months' worth of an increase in the motor fuel tax?
Kathleen Hopkinson is coming up to answer that question.
Now, if you, on the executive summary, if you're taking notes, you can look there. So this tax would go into effect July 1st, 2026, which would bring in approximately 2.6 million between July 1st, 2026 and November 30th, 2026. Over a 12-month period, the estimate is 6.3 million.
So for our concern and trying to fill the gap of our expenditures over revenues, we're looking at 2.6 million for 2026, not 6.5 million.
That's correct.
So I, I share the same concerns as Mr. Young. I, I'm concerned that the fact that we've already increased, it's already going up with the CPI every year, thanks to our, our state legislature. Our gas tax will go up regardless of what we do here. I don't think this is the solution. I, I, I am happy. I, I support Mr. Tepe and Mr. Leonard and their, what they're trying to do to be creative. But I don't think adding another tax and taxing our county, our county citizens is, is the answer to this. I think we need to go back and look at our, our expenditures instead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gums.
Gums here. Couple of notes here on this topic of the increase. So to my colleagues, both my colleagues, so you're discussing Effingham County, which has a total of like 80,000 people in the whole county. Lake Geneva has like 9,000 humans that live there. So everything is relative as it pertains to need. And to me, that's part of my weight in my decision here. As far as it's, it's, it's two pieces to the puzzle that we always fail on one side of, right? So when you have our partners throughout the county asking, you know, we're asking our partners throughout the county to reduce, reduce, reduce. Okay. Because that's what everybody wants is to reduce. And they come to the table and they say, well, we're going to go ahead and do what we can as long as you're acting in good faith as board members to do your part also, which is find us more revenue, which we consistently tell them year over year over year, we're going to try and find you some more revenue. And yet we never do. We don't hold up our end of the bargain. We're asking them to negotiate year over year to reduce and we are never holding up our end of the bargain. And at some point, we're going to have to because our gas doesn't get any cheaper. We have deputies that drive all over this county. They pay the same amount of gas that you do and I do. So no matter how you look at it, this is going to increase at some level and we have to address that. I've said it every single year. And it is a two-part problem, but you can't fix it with ignoring the other side. You have to have good faith. You have to do everything you can. And if you don't take those two things in combination, you will never get to a solution, which is exactly where we are again this year. And I stand firm on that.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Yes.
I'll make a comment. You know, the cost of living is up for everyone. It's going to be up for the county because the cost of living is extreme. We don't know what it is because of the government shutdown, but I could guarantee that the cost of living is still going up. And it's affecting everyone and ultimately. And ultimately, what it comes down to is, we asked our, we asked our partners, we asked our, uh, elected officials to cut their budget by eight percent. What does that come out to as far as number of employees that are going to be laid off? I would like to know that if possible, Madam Chair. If we could find out individual departments and individual elected heads, how many people are going to be laid off if we pass this budget? With the, the gas tax, now I know there's a lot of balls in the air, you know, with the, with KDOT as far as getting this money. So if we don't approve this, we're going to have to, you know, start at ground zero again and figure out how we're going to be able to cut people. I mean, that's ultimately what it comes down to. Do we want to cut more people? And I am, you know, I am, obviously don't want to pay more in taxes. The gas tax in Illinois is high, but honestly, I drive through Indiana all the time, and most of the time, I, it's cheaper where I live in South Elgin than it is in Indiana. That's a fact. It's cheaper in Southern Illinois, you mentioned, because it's by St. Louis and Wisconsin. Those are the two cheapest places for gas, probably within 1,000 miles. I don't know why that is. I think it's because of pipelines and maybe shipping up in, you know, Lake Superior. But those are the two cheapest places I've seen in my travels. So try not to, you know, saying cross it over to the Wisconsin border and saving 40, 50 cents. It makes it a little more difficult, but comparatively, our taxes compared to the rest of the states, we're right in line. And yeah, I mean, ultimately, it comes down to, you know, our, our decision as board members is, do we want to cut more people? And like I said, I think we need to know what that number is.
Kathleen, hold on a second. There was a question asked. Do you have an estimate of if we, uh, reduce the, if this is not passed through, this, uh, potential of a increase in the gasoline tax, will that go directly to projects that would be served and personnel or just personnel? Do you have any idea? Because it would, all of that money would be, uh, directly impacted only KDOT.
Can you ask that question again?
All right, so we don't, this does not get passed through the full board. What would be the impact upon the personnel at KDOT or projects?
So the motor fuel tax revenue goes into the motor fuel tax fund. Currently, there are no personnel budgeted in that particular fund. It's all project, uh, transportation projects.
Okay, so, so the, uh, for instance, that was suggested by a member of the public, the Randall and Hops Road, it would be similar projects that wouldn't, uh, road safety issues would not be improved. Over a period of time. Mr. Young, you've spoke once. Let me get everybody once.
Just to follow up, ultimately, I would like to know what those numbers are, um, as far as the number of people that are going to have to be caught. By the end, if we could ask that of our elected officials and department heads.
We could, we can get to that as we move through.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Mr. Tepe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd, I'd really like to attempt to change the narrative on this to some extent, okay? Mr. Leonard and I have been working extremely hard, extremely well with a lot of, of the electeds and the departments. The cooperation that we have received from them has been, has, has been very rewarding. We've approached it on the fact that we're in this together and that we need to look at solutions that affect the budget, okay? We need more revenue in the general fund in order to accomplish some of the things that will have to happen. There are departments that have virtually no revenue associated with them that will need some additional funds, and the cuts that we've had to make are severe. I'm talking about the public defender, I'm talking about the state's attorney, I'm talking about the coroner, okay? And a few of the, and the court services. I, I could kind of go on and on. So Mr. Leonard and I have come up with a way to increase funds into the general fund that we will then be able to finish our negotiations with these particular electeds, uh, and, and come up with a budget wherein although none of us are happy with it, that we are in, in agreement and will find some way to live to it. We can't do that if we don't have some additional revenue. Our approach is to increase the gas fund, which is something that the gas cost, which is something that the board can do, okay? That money flows to RTA, or that funding, that money flows to KDOT. And then we would increase the amount of money that we take from KDOT for the RTA tax and put that into the general fund. So it's not a matter of, gee, we're taking one particular thing. We've put this together and, and have, have some, some tentative discussions that we've had that will make it tenable for, for these electeds to work with us based upon the things that Mr. Leonard and I will bring to you in the next couple of weeks. But if we do not get the gas tax increased, we don't know what to do. And I mean, when I say we don't know what to do, we don't know what to do. And, um, I don't know how I will continue to put my time in when we can't get the, the kind of support that we need, need from this board in order to make a workable budget for this county. Thank you.
Who else? Mike, you had your hand up before? No, not anymore? Yes, Ms. Allen.
This is Allen. With respect to, uh, Mr. Tepe and Mr. Leonard, who have put in tenable hours, the I think historically, and I see you rolling your eyes, but I think what has happened is that over the years, our departments and many of our offices have marched along on a pretty even keel, setting budgets, living up to them, and there hasn't been a lot of, a lot of change because we are a frugal county. We always have been. I think that what has happened is that we've had wonderful grants for wonderful programs. Lots of them in health, lots of them in, in judicial public safety. And even though we all say to each other, when the grant is over, those positions may change. The fact is, we like the programs and we like the people, and that's why so some of our judicial public safety offices have just flown off the charts with their budgets because we want to keep those programs and we want to keep those people. And this is the first time in my tenure that I have seen a board who has said, the rubber's meeting the road here, and we just can't afford to fund everything. And we can try and keep our people in place if we just do 7.99% across the board. And so that's what we threw out there and we asked people to do. And if we were able to follow that, we didn't think we'd have to dip into reserves. So maybe the explanation that the board really needs is why with those cuts in place, we're still worrying about dipping into reserves. I would love an answer to that, and I'm not competent enough to be able to answer. But I'm also going to refer to this little bit of history. The Fall County's transportation departments went to the legislature and said, we are always at the mercy of our county boards, and we are asked to do five-year plans in order to have matching funds for state and federal monies. Can you give us a dedicated revenue stream? And the legislature said, that's a worthy cause. Everybody in Illinois is driving on the roads, so let's do something. And what they created was the RTA sales tax as a dedicated revenue stream for transportation. So they knew they would have that money come in, and they could form their five-year plans, knowing that that money was going to be there. And then DuPage said, well, we have a really high gas tax, so we don't need that money. But what we have done is we've built a really beautiful government center and a new courthouse and a new jail and a parking deck, and what we need is money to service our bots. So how about if you put a phrase into that new RTA sales tax that says it could be used not just for transportation, but for public safety? So now your dedicated revenue stream has just been compromised. And every county's tried to figure out, well, how do we do it? And Kane County said, well, we'll do a hybrid. We'll do 80%, 82% transportation. It turned out to be about 17% public safety, and we lived with that for a number of years until said, gee, you know, the general fund could really use some money. How about if we start to borrow from that RTA money? So the thing is that if we just left that RTA revenue stream alone and it went to transportation, we wouldn't have to have the conversation about gas tax because the money would be there. And what we would be asking everyone to do is to live within that 7.99% across the board cut, and we would be moving forward on our budget. I'm concerned about the people in my district that every time I go to fill their tanks with gas, that they'll just sigh and say, here we go. Thanks for letting me vent and give some history.
Mr. Greif.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lot of good repartee here. Uh, that's, that's good. And appreciate your, your point, Vern, what you and, and Bill have been doing is, is, you know, prickly. And I'm wondering if, um, let's say the gas tax doesn't pass, if we could use, and I hate using reserves for anything, but if that would be, still give you the ability to do the negotiating, the very important negotiating that you need to do. If it doesn't happen, I'm not saying it won't, but, um, you know, I look at this, that nobody wants to increase taxes. Nobody wants to, to touch reserves, but if I have a choice, and we were reminded in a recent committee meeting that the level of reserves is beyond statute, if I may say that, that it's, that's what we were told, is that it's, I'll just leave it at that, that it was too much. And, um, so if that's the case, wanting to get down to a level that is within statute and solving this problem, that might be an option.
Respond?
I'm sorry, what did you?
May I respond?
Yes, please, please.
Oh, yes, you may, and no to reserves.
We don't have the reserves to cover any of this, okay? Even with the steps that we have proposed, it's highly likely that our reserves will go below of the required amounts that we've established for ourselves. So whether you think there's money in reserves, there really isn't. Okay? I don't know what we would do. We have tried to be very, very logical and very open. It is extremely disturbing to me, uh, for some of these ideas to come up when all you're doing is focusing on the gas tax, we're focusing on the budget. We're focusing on the kinds of things that we need to do to get the budget passed. It's very disconcerting to put in the kind of effort, uh, that I put in and Mr., I'm speaking more for myself than Mr. Leonard can speak for himself. Uh, it's quite disturbing to put in this effort and not get the, um, not get the support of the board. If this gas tax fails, I don't know what to do. And, um, I'll probably spend some more time with my wife rather than, uh, spending time down here.
I, I, I would recommend that anyway, but yes, ma'am.
So, um, I'm Newell's District 3. I have sat here month after month after month, listening with this, wrestling with this. I have been against the gas tax. I was against the grocery tax. And somehow I just hoped that somewhere the money would come because I'm also not willing to give up any of our great services. And as I've been out in my district, um, which are people that are the landscapers and, and the people that go to work and the people that are going to be paying this extra tax. No, we don't want to do it, but my group of people also really value the services we get, especially at the courthouse. We have APD, you know, Aurora Police Department, but a lot of them come up because we have speeding ticket or because we have a problem with our child or we have this or that. And, um, the services and the level of compassion that I've heard my neighbors say that they receive from our county judicial partners and the creative, you know, programs, the, the drug court and the veterans court and even programs through JJC. That's super important to my constituents, so I am changing my view on this and I'm all in for this tax.
Very good. All right, Ms. Jubie, you have not spoken yet.
No, I haven't. Thank you. Um, I was just going to, uh, keep this to the gas tax because that's what's on the table, except the fact the overall budget has been brought into this. So I would like to address two issues, if I may. The first issue is, um, it's been brought to our attention that we will be disrespectful to the hard work of board members if we don't vote the way they want us to. And I'm highly offended by that because I put in so much more work than what is required of my job. And I never think it's disrespectful when people disagree with me. What I do think is disrespectful is when people tell me my numbers are wrong. And, and which brings me to my second point. Fund 112 has at least $23 million in it, so we do have an overage of reserves. We are not required by law to carry any overage over zero. We choose to have a 90-day operating expense because it is prudent. Anything over 90 days, we have in our Fund 1112, which is important to have because we do not want to issue tax anticipation warrants when our taxes are late. Because as much as we'd like to say all the taxes come in at the same time, they don't. And our bills don't all come in at the same time. So it's important to have an overflow fund. But to say that there's no money in that overflow fund to pick up a $6 million difference, which actually may only be a $2.6 million difference, given what Ms. Molina said, is, is disingenuous at best. Secondly, I recall a great deal of discussion that said we would take the 2025 budget and we would take away 7.99%. And that some, some, um, departments and some electeds aren't going to be able to do that, and that we would have to be flexible in that. And I understand that and I support that. But when you look at the numbers on the last page of our packet, adopted in, in 2025 was 2,770,000, no, I'm sorry, If you take away 7.99% of that, that's $22,193 and 200, sorry, $22,193,203. You have to apologize. I'm dyslexic. This is really hard for me to read these numbers. Which leaves us with a difference of $23,190,479 that we're asking over our 7.99 reduction. Now, if we are in negotiations with other elected officials for $23 million, I think we should have been brought in on those conversations. So I'm a little confused because what we agreed to and what I see don't make any sense, so it's very hard for me to vote on that. But I also don't want my hard work to be diminished and be called disrespectful because I don't agree with someone else's hard work. It's just math, and I can't get the math to work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think everyone, everyone who's had the opportunity to speak at least once, correct? We've been speaking about the, uh, Mr. Roth, and I think everyone, uh, we've been having this discussion now for a little, almost an hour right now.
Call the roll.
You ready to call the roll?
No, point of order.
Yes, would you like, and I saw your hand up, I just would like to bring this, so, Mr. Young, if it's a point of order and you'd like to speak?
Yes.
This is your second time, please.
Thank you, uh, Leslie Jubey. I agree with you. I mean, just because two board members here think they spent a whole bunch of time doing this, who cares? All right? Good God. Here's what we should do. Let's go ahead and let's pass this tax and let's, and whatever, whatever money that we don't have, make them pay for it. Well, and both on the right and the left, these people, Denise, Brian, everybody, you guys pay for it instead of us going ahead and, and, and not, uh, and being responsible. So that's the problem that I have. So that's the problem that I have with all this. In Maryville, Indiana, it's two-point-six-two per gallon, okay? We need to say no to this. We need to stop this spending. Saying.
We're ready to take this vote. Anybody ready? All right, let's take the vote, please. Allen?
Allen, no.
Arroyo?
Well, yes.
Garcia?
Garcia, Garcia, yes.
Gripe?
Gripe, no.
Yes. Ichbal?
Ichbal, no.
Jubey?
Jubey, no.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, no.
Penises?
Penises, yes.
Roth?
Roth, no.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, no.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Young?
No.
Mr. Sanchez? Is he gone?
Uh, he's away.
He's away. I think we have nine.
Nine to eight passes.
I have a different count.
I had ten.
I have nine to eight.
Eight.
I have nine for a no's. Can we verify the count, please?
Uh, I have Allen, no. Arroyo, yes. Garcia, yes. Gripe, no. Gums, yes. Ichbal, no. Jubey, no. Kias, yes. Louis, yes. Linder, yes. Molina, no. Penises, yes. Roth, no. No Sanchez. Strathman, yes. Sergeus, no. Tepe, yes. And Young, no.
Yeah. No's, eight no's. Okay, very good. It passes. All right. The next item for your discussion is ordinance number twenty-five dash three-eight-two, establishing and opposing a county grocery retails tax and a county grocery service occupation tax for the county of Kane. May I have a motion?
Councillor, move.
Thank you, Ms. Gums.
Linder, second.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Discussion?
Uh, David, there's more of a, of a question and, um, Ginger had brought this up and I know that you guys are talking about this at Exec. Could we explain, could someone explain to everybody that wasn't here at Exec as to the who, who is affected? I think it's a, uh, anyone that's in, that's in the county that would be selling product. I mean, is it Reams Meat Market, for example? Um, yeah, that's unincorporated.
That's incorporated.
Okay, so I just want to, people, so it would be the unincorporated. You mentioned the, 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 um, fast food, convenience stores, that sort of thing. Uh, I just want to ask that question and also what is the revenue that we expect to bring in from this?
I'll let Ms. Hopkinson explain that.
So currently, the grocery tax is part of the state sales tax. The state is eliminating, um, the tax on groceries under the state sales tax effective January first, twenty-twenty-six. Um, just as background, the RTA sales tax will still include a tax on groceries. They're not removing it on the RTA sales tax. Um, so the tax has always been there. The state is eliminating it. So this resolution is to keep the tax on groceries in place.
And how much revenue in unincorporating?
So, um, the difficulty is that the categories that the state uses to track, um, sales tax revenue, they don't have a category for groceries. They have a category called food and they have a category called general merchandise, which are similar. Uh, so if you talk to the Illinois Department of Revenue, they will tell you, even after you plead, uh, that they cannot tell you exactly how much revenue. Um, I talked to surrounding municipalities who have put, um, who have voted to keep the tax in place, how they calculated it. They, uh, basically are guessing and using an estimate. So based on my conversations with other, with municipalities in Kane County, it could be forty thousand dollars. It could be four hundred thousand dollars.
It's a big difference.
Any other questions? Yes, yes.
Got a question, but a comment. Leslie, I'd like to thank you for working on the budget. We got to that seven point nine-nine percent because of you, so thank you for doing that, Vern, of course. Appreciate all you have done on this. Um, we're not raising a new tax here. We're already paying one percent in the unincorporated areas. The, uh, retailers are already paying that one percent. It's just going to pick up that one percent. It's being covered by the state. Um, that is such a crazy wide range. I don't understand it. But, you know, it's not going to raise a lot of money, but honestly, we're cutting to the bone. A lot of our, uh, electives and, uh, and department heads are cutting to the bone already. Let's give them this little bit. I mean, it's not going to be a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Gripe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, what Kathy was saying, I, I believe it completely, but it, um, I got two big questions. Number one, if the state can't tell what's, what's going to get taxed or how it gets taxed or how much it generates, how the heck are they going to pay us? Is, you know, just whatever. That's one thing. And the second thing is if we have no clue how much is going to generate, how does it help in the budget process? What number would we use to, to do this? So I agree with Ted. It's helps a little, helps a lot, but we have no clue. How, what do we do?
Um, I, I, if I may, I believe I may be able to answer that. Kathleen, please correct me if I misrepresent you. Um, the, the money is just being carried over. The number is being carried over from last year because we do not know that impact, if it will be reduced or just remain the same. Because of how it's all mixed together. Um, they will be taxing, um, they, the money will be distributed back. The process, procedure will remain the same. I believe you may live in St. Charles. It's the same issue that St. Charles has. It's all the same. So the existing tax rate remains. And then it is, I'm just talking whether it's not right or wrong, it just remains. And then it gets redistributed back to the municipality, um, or the township from which it comes from.
If I may, a follow-up. Thank you. That's very helpful. Do we know how much we got this year, last year, whatever?
So it's bundled into our state sales tax revenue. So if you run a, if you look at, um, an Illinois Department of Revenue report, it'll break our state sales tax down into like seven different categories. One of the larger categories is general merchandise. Uh, there's one for food. Um, those are the big, but, um, we just, we do not get a separate payment that's labeled, you know, tax on groceries. It's just all state sales tax revenue.
Yes, yes, sir.
I had one of the, uh, audience members stayed for a while last night, Ms. Romano, and we asked a lot of questions I couldn't answer. I spent some time looking at this. It's still confusing. But, um, basically, uh, the tax on groceries would be including your Twinkies, your can of pop, your bag of chips. If you buy flashlight batteries, no. And prepared food. And there's a little hot dog spinning around in the thing. Those are taxed at the regular old sales tax rate. Uh, those are not taxed at the grocery rate. Those are taxed as a, as a regular sales tax. And, you know, as if you had bought the hot dog at a restaurant instead. And then there's this, uh, retailer occupation tax special thing or another that's also in here. That has to do with, so the guy who owns the gas station bought, um, eighteen bales of paper towels. And because they were for resale, he didn't pay any tax on them. When he takes them off the shelf because he's going to use some of them, then that occupation tax goes in. He has to pay the tax on what he took off the shelf. Now, that's not all of it. I'm sure it's not. The other thing is that the, the revenue department said that basically this was a, it was a swap. They were paying the municipalities and counties and then they were just, or they were, they were collecting a tax and they were paying it out. Uh, they would, and complicated bookkeeping. And they said, taking it off so that the municipalities, counties and so forth can put it back on. So it was within the intention, the legislators knew that many of us would put it back on. That doesn't make it good, but I, that's, I missed I could get out of about an hour and a half of digging around last night.
Okay, well, thank you for your due diligence on that. And you've already spoken once. Does anybody need to say anything, Mr. Penises?
Yeah, just, uh, one quick follow-up. Um, if you've been following the news, pretty much, I even seen one, although I'm sure there's one out there that has turned it down. I think I may have seen one in the south, southwest suburbs, but pretty much everyone is passing this and a lot of them are doing it. And I know one particular town, and I'm not going to call them out, but there's a lot of communities, what they're doing is they're passing it on the down low since they don't have to do a referendum. They'll pass it late in their board meetings and no one really knows what they're doing. So most communities are passing this. We're not out on an island doing something that other communities aren't doing. You know, as Mike said, I mean, it, it doesn't make it right. But we're in a position now where it's like, we, we need whatever we can get.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're done, uh, with that conversation. Could you please take the roll? Allen?
Allen, no.
Arroyo? Garcia? Thank you. Garcia?
Garcia, yes.
Gripe?
Gripe, no.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Ichbal?
Ichbal, no.
Jubey?
Jubey, aye.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, no.
Penises?
Penises, yes.
Roth?
Roth, no.
Strathman? Sergeus?
Sergeus, no.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Young?
No.
Passes nine to eight. All right, um, items number C, D, E, and F, uh, we're going to be taking off, but we have to do it one at a time. Um, and they will be, uh, brought forward at the October twenty-ninth meeting. So we'll just.
Madam Chair, Gums' question?
Yes, of course.
Um, or are we going to handle this the same way?
Exactly.
We're going to call them out and then no motion, then it fails? Okay, all right, thank you.
So, um, yes, sir.
You also need to do that for G because that can't be voted on until after it's been published.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right, so we're going to be doing it for, everybody, pay attention. Uh, we've got C, D, E, F, G. After that, we'll have one more item to discuss. All right, may I have a mo- um, do not pass these right for us. No, please. Resolution, may I have a motion a second to consider, uh, and possibly discuss item number twenty-five dash three-eight-three? Saying no motion. We're call the roll. Allen? No, what, what? Oh, no motion, just go forward?
If there's no motion or second, then it fails for lack of a motion.
Thank you, absolutely, absolutely. All right, I've been going at this for two and a half hours now. Um, all right, may I have, that fails. May I have a motion in a second to discuss item number twenty-five dash three-eight-four? It fails. May I have a motion a second to discuss item number three-eight-five? That fails. May I have a motion to discuss twenty-five dash three-eight-six? That also fails. And may I have a motion a second to pass ordinance twenty-five dash three-eight-seven? That also fails. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're on to item number resolution twenty-five dash three-eight-eight. And that is approving the FY twenty-six budget to be placed on public display.
Great move.
Thank you, Mr. Gripe. Second, please. Thank you, Ms. Strathman. Is there any discussion on this? I see none for display. All right. Oh, yes, we have two hands up. Yes, Ms. Jubey, please.
Uh, I have a question on what we're putting on display? If that's possible to ask about that, because not physically putting it on display.
Ms. Jubey, I'm sorry, can't quite hear you.
I said I have a question about what we're putting on display as opposed to actually putting it on display. Is it appropriate for me to ask that question now?
That's a fine question to ask.
I, I want to know where the twenty-three million in overage comes from, from what we agreed on, um, as a group.
All right, Kathleen, can you propose that? And Mr. Tepe? Um, are, did you?
I had another conversation.
That's a sideways conversation. That's fine. Um, can you repeat your question so that everybody can hear it, please?
I, I wanted to know where the twenty-three million dollar over the seven point nine-nine reduction comes from.
Um, I'm not sure the twenty-three million.
So when you take the adopted twenty, the adopted twenty-five budget and you subtract the seven point nine-nine percent that we asked for, it comes up twenty-three million dollars less than what we're putting on display. And I'm curious where that twen- what is in that twenty-three million? Because we're talking about everyone making cuts, but they're, they're not being reflected in the dollar amount.
So, um, the column that's labeled first review, um, in the draft budget for any office that did not cut its budget, um, the amount that was put in is the amount that was requested by the board from resolution twenty-five-two-seven-seven. So currently, the draft budget for the general fund is only using, um, a little over two million dollars in reserves.
Do you have a follow-up to that?
Well, I, that, that wasn't my question. My question was, on the last page, which I now have to get to because of course I need to be there, so I'm not. Um, on the last page, it shows what dollar amount we are putting on the budget for our first review, for our submitted budget and our first review budget. Our, I'm assuming that the submitted budget is higher than the first review budget because several departments or electives came in with a reduced amount. But that first review budget is still twenty-three million dollars more than what we had asked. So my question is, is that twenty-three million dollars what is currently being negotiated with the other electives?
So the last, so there's two, um, the budget document that is in your packet is in two, um, sections. There's the general fund section and the special revenue fund section. So the last page is just the special revenue funds that, the amount that says two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million, that is just the special revenue funds. The general fund is a hundred-and-twenty-six million. Um, so the total budget is actually four-hundred-and-five million. And I'll just go over the numbers. So the twenty-twenty-five general fund budget was a hundred-and-forty-four million. The twenty-twenty-six, uh, budget that is going to be put on display is a hundred-and-twenty-six million, which is seventeen million dollars less than the twenty-twenty-five budget, which is a twelve percent reduction. Um, the special revenue funds, which are primarily capital in nature. There is some personnel, uh, like KDOT and Health, but it's primarily capital projects, transportation capital projects. We still have ARPA projects. The twenty-twenty-five special revenue fund budget was two-hundred-and-ninety-nine-point-eight million. The two-hundred-and-twenty-six, um, special revenue fund budget is two-hundred-and-seventy-eight million, uh, which is a drop of twenty-one million dollars, which is a seven percent drop. Um, i- in totals, the total twenty-twenty-five amended budget was four-hundred-and-forty-three million. Uh, the total twenty-twenty-six budget is four-hundred-and-five million, which is a drop of, uh, thirty-eight million dollars or nine percent.
Thank you. That's because we're not, we didn't ask any special revenue fund reductions, correct?
Um, the, the county departments, the non-elected offices, um, were also told to, um, cut their budgets as well. So, yeah.
All right, so that was, that was my mistake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Uh, who else, Mr. Gripe? Did you have your hand up?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no. Who else? Mr. Ichbal? Any?
No question.
All right, with that, let's call the roll. Allen?
Allen, aye.
Arroyo?
Arroyo, yes.
Aye, aye.
Garcia?
Garcia, yes.
Gripe?
Yes.
Ms. Yes.
Ichbal?
Ichbal, yes.
Jubey? Louis?
Yes.
Linder? Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Penisys?
Penisys, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez? Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, no.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Young?
Yes.
Passes one no. Very good. As a follow-up to this for the general public, tomorrow, which is the 23rd, which is what it states, the budget will be posted online. A copy, a hard copy will also be at the clerk's office for your review. It'll be online for, available for your review for 15 days. If you have any comments to make, please send them to the county board's office and we will make sure that those are distributed appropriately to those, to the proper party. We look forward to getting your comments on the budget. And we will then come back at the finance committee to be able to discuss it. And that'll be on October 28th, or the 29th, the 29th, October 29th. And that'll be passed through, of course, from there to the executive committee and then to the full board. So we are halfway there. So thank you all, I look forward to getting your comments.
They'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Strathman?
One favor?